Today is the thirtieth day of April. The time is nine o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us.
Our carny operations.
Bethany Kelly, HR.
Jeremy Shabbitt, paramedics.
Kurt Cantu, landfill.
Scott Coburg, Parks and Waterways.
Bob Perkins, Ikey guy.
The clerk's office, that's Montreux.
All right, well, thank you. Ma'am clerk, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to change the agenda. I move to approve, to approve the changes to the agenda as identified. That's five, seven, a grant, and five, ten, B one, two, three, as they are on the agenda. Okay, is there a second motion? Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have some unfinished business. Fee waiver request that was tabled from four sixteen to today. Are we going to, do we have a motion on that one?
Well, Mr. Chair, before we do a motion, I'll just ask her, is there any kind of time sensitivity to this one for the individual who wants to do the project? I mean, if we table this, is that going to not affect what he's trying to do?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item here is being.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry. I'll move to, move to remove the unfinished business from the table, so I guess, so he can talk about it, then we can decide.
I second the motion, Commissioner.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, fee waiver, we were going to get some legal advice and assess a policy, I believe.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Item one is being moved to PA discussion.
Okay.
Further discussion will be had this morning with legal on this item, so.
Okay.
But we have had some discussions about the program. We're looking forward to further elaborating with the team.
And is this individual who wants to do the proposal, he's not, sitting there with a bunch of garbage today that's.
I understand that is not the case. They're, they're planning to clean up out there on the public lands. That's correct.
All right, so we got motion on the, on item one, on the unfinished business.
I move to remove the landfill fee waiver request for consideration at this time.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now, the next business, unfinished business. It's Bob.
Yeah.
Final ranking and recommendation for RFP two four oh three two.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, under unfinished business this morning, we do have a final ranking and award recommendation for RFP two four zero three two, the Ada County Sheriff's Office Lab Information System. And the evaluation team has completed the initial evaluations and the interviews as well, but they're still in the review process. And therefore, we'd like to request to table the final ranking and award recommendation to the May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four Open Business Meeting.
Okay, is there any questions from the Board? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to table the final ranking and request to enter fee negotiations of RFP two four zero three two, Ada County Sheriff's Office Lab Information System, to May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Okay, now we get into some new business. We have a couple of resolutions, three. I'll open the public hearing on resolution two nine seven six, a resolution for destruction of certain records of the Treasurer's Office. Do we have any discussion or issues on that resolution?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I can speak to that one. This is for a variety of electronic records maintained by the Treasurer's Office, deposit slips, manuals. These records have been classified as either semi-permanent and permanent, and have all greatly exceeded the statutory retention requirements. Some of these records date back to the nineties, so.
They're all electronic?
They're all electronic ones. Majority are from about twenty ten to twenty fourteen, but again, all have met the requirements.
No, that takes one, one big touch of the delete button. Okay.
Well, I guess if they're electronic, what's the need to get rid of them? Usually we're talking about paper records.
Right.
And space, but if, I mean, if stuff's digital, why, why don't we just retain it in perpetuity?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, I, I believe would be with that storage capacity would be one reason, but we no longer need them. It could free up some space.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two nine seven six.
I move to approve resolution two nine seven six as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number two nine seven seven, a resolution setting forth authority of the Indigent Services Director to act on behalf of the Ada County Board of Commissioners to release liens.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that one. It's my understanding the Board has been briefed on this particular resolution. However, it just authorizes that team to release liens in certain situations where cases meet a certain criteria without having to come in front of the Board for every single one of those.
Okay.
Well, I like that one because it just will help with administrative efficiency and all we're doing is rubber stamping, so that just takes time, and if we can save that, then I think that's good.
As long as they establish, adhere to the policies.
Right. All right. That's why they have to have the administrative review, and we're authorizing them to do that.
Yes.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing on resolution number two nine seven seven. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number two nine seven seven as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have resolution two nine seven eight, a resolution for an extension of temporary employee referral recruitment incentive program for recruitment of Ada County employees. Is there a discussion on this resolution?
Oh, there you go.
Chairman, Commissioners, in July of two thousand twenty-two, this resolution, twenty-seven sixty-four, initially started, it created a program. When we started then, we were having a really hard time with recruitment and retention. We had two hundred and five vacancies across the entire county. To date, we have a hundred and twenty-five now currently. The program has been very successful, a hundred and eleven new hires coming from employee referrals. Of those, ninety-five are still here, so that's an eighty-five point five percent retention rate of those individuals. The office receiving the most new hires from the program is the Sheriff's Office at forty-six, followed by the Clerk out of recorder at seventeen. Virtually every office has benefited from this in some form or the other. This resolution is provided to give an extension through the end of the fiscal year. It is the recommendation of HR that we put together, a committee that would look at putting some more parameters, should this be continued for any further consideration to move into a policy and maybe defining hard to fill versus right now, it's a very blanket across the county. But at this point, that's where we're at, is just looking for the renewal through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, is there any more discussion from the Board? Any questions? Go ahead.
So it appears it's been very successful, so.
It has.
It's useful to.
Yeah, numbers-wise, it has, and then also the Sheriff's Office yesterday shared with me anecdotally, they don't have the facts on this, but they, their process obviously rules out a lot of candidates. They've seen an increase in their quality of hires, and they feel a decrease has happened when you look at numbers of those who wash out through the background process.
How's the job market these days for county type of jobs?
We're definitely seeing it better. While it is better, there are some peaks in areas within the county that still are having some tough times. Definitely finding attorneys is incredibly challenging. Some of our more entry-level positions, there's still some challenges there, and then certainly Sheriff's Office, in and of the nature of their work, is always a challenge. But it is a better market these days. It's not perfect by any means.
Have you ever seen a public market?
Nope. It's always a movement.
Okay. Is there any other discussion before we close the public hearing? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on resolution two nine seven eight.
I move to approve resolution two nine seven eight as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the licenses, peddler's solicitation license, catering permits, license transfer, license renewals. Any questions or issues with any of the licenses? There are a number of them. Now, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve three peddler solicitor licenses as identified on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have the rest of them, catering permits, et cetera. We have a motion.
I'll move to approve the licenses listed on the agenda, including thirteen catering permits, one license transfer, and eighty-seven license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have clerk's office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I just want to give a kudos and a shout-out to our Recorder's Office, because as you can see, they have been very busy processing alcohol license renewals. They've processed six hundred and ninety-four so far, and they think they have about two hundred and eighty-two left to go. But they're sitting in a really good spot, and that's due in part to the online renewal process that they established, and so I just wanted to give them a shout-out. We appreciate all their hard work on that. Other than that, we've got budgets due next week, so the Auditor's Office is very busy compiling all that information and helping different offices and departments throughout the county work on their budgets. We received the preliminary personnel requests last week, and so Trent is getting that together, and he'll send you, he'll send the Board a summary of what we've received so far, so look for that later today, probably in your inboxes.
Okay. Anything else from clerk's office? You getting an election ready?
Election updates?
We have an election in three weeks from today.
We do?
We do. I'm not sure if you're aware, but yes, we have an election coming up. Early voting starts next week, so we're looking forward to getting that off, and things are running smoothly over there, so.
You anticipate a lot of early voting?
We do. I mean, it's always steady and certainly frees up lines on Election Day, so yes.
Okay.
Do you know if the absentees that are requested so far, is that lower than last election, or do you know if it's kind of in line?
I don't know off the top of my head how the absentees compare to past elections at this point. I could certainly get that information for you, though.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I would just like to reiterate what you just said in terms of all these licenses and everything. These are the kinds of things that the general public doesn't realize that we spend their money doing, but until they want a license and they want to pass, or whatever other service that we provide to the community, and I just wanted to reiterate that they do a good job and, and for the taxpayers in terms of spending it wisely and serving them, so.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And part of that's because of our online portal that we have, that they can get it done that way. That's good.
Yeah. It's more convenient.
More convenient for the taxpayer and more convenient for our staff. So it's working both ways. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up, we have the Claims Journal. Do we have a motion on the Claims Journal?
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the Claims Journal dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. We next up have Personnel Actions.
I'll move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and let the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say, all right, aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have our distinguished Treasurer with us, Mr. Batista.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Last week, we conducted a training for county employees on detecting and identifying counterfeit bills. It was the best participation we've had from the county employees. About sixty employees participated and joined us with our special guest from the Secret Service, so it was great, and I just want to thank Director Coburg and Batista for opening up the facility so that we could offer these trainings throughout the county.
So they know how to detect a defective bill or counterfeit bill?
That's right.
Okay.
What was a, what was an interesting fact you learned?
That a lot of the bills are produced internationally, and sometimes the counterfeit bill is an actual bill. It's just been washed to change like the five into a fifty. So, you know, it's not just photocopying paper. You can actually use real bills, but there's ways to identify the fibers and watermarks.
Have we ever had that issue in, in the county? Is it, are they showing up here?
They're showing occasionally, but, you know, our staff has been trained how to just ask for alternate methods of payment. Yeah.
Good, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Grants. Grant number two four zero seven, a grant application to the Bureau of Reclamation for Ada County Divergent Park Design.
Mr. Chairman, this is one that was added, so I might deserve an explanation.
Sure. Oh, there we go. You've got an explanation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, this is a grant application. Just to give you some, some background, Ada County Parks and Waterways manages about two miles of Greenbelt property just downstream from diversion dam to Warm Springs. A few years ago, when that license agreement with the Bureau of Reclamation for management of that expired, the county renewed an agreement for twenty-five years and added two acres at what we refer to as diversion park, currently a location just downstream from diversion dam. It has a pretty nice overlook of the dam as well, the kind of waterfall over the diversion there. We've been working with the Bureau for quite some time to determine how best to use that property, and so this will help us create a design, hire a landscape architect to create a design for that park property. We anticipate perhaps a rest area, restroom, a maintenance outpost, some internal trails and interpreted signs. We do want to engage with stakeholders to determine what's the best use of that as well, and see if we can gather any additional input. The, the capital outlay for the county would be a hundred thousand dollars. The grant is for reimburse, a reimbursement of fifty thousand dollars from the Bureau of Reclamation.
Okay. Any questions?
Just curious, is, is this a place that people have tried to go to even in its current condition, so that it's attractive for expansion and.
Mr. Chairman.
Better facilities, et cetera?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, yes, it is sort of a socially-used area, user-created access area at this point in time. A lot of anglers use that location, as does the Intermountain Bird Observatory and the BSU folks that created a side channel and are working on the Diane Moore Park down below the bench of the Greenbelt. So it is being used sort of socially, but informal access tends to create other additional issues and, you know, items related to vandalism, and, and there's been some tree cutting and things that are not appropriate behavior there. So what we're hoping to do is, again, formalize kind of the park design and access and, and create kind of a new outpost on the Greenbelt. It's, it's really kind of a, a nice rest area as you enter the Black Cliffs area of the Greenbelt because it tends to get really windy in that location, and so between diversion dam and Lucky Peak or Discovery Park at the bottom of Lucky Peak Dam, a lot of folks, you know, tend to make that trip out, but some folks would maybe choose to, it would be a destination park, I think, on the Greenbelt for those users that don't want to go all the way to Lucky Peak.
Good. All right, any other questions? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve grant number twenty-four oh seven dash A as identified on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have some interim events at Expo Idaho. Any questions or issues with the interim events?
If he wants to make comments.
Would you like to make a comment on the bridge, Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. You're going to start more and more of our concessionaire agreements on our commercial exhibitors, right in the heart of booking those different concessionaires, so it's going to start getting busy in that aspect, but the interim events are going to continue to keep happening out here like they have been in the past, so the interim events are pretty normal, but the Western Idaho Fair ones are going to start coming in a little more aggressively.
Okay. All right, any questions on the four interim events? All right, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the four interim, interim event agreements and the two concessionaire agreements for the two thousand twenty-four Western Idaho Fair as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say, all right, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we have.
Thank you.
Two concessionaire agreements. Zarba Great Hero and Big Sky Catering. Any questions or issues with the concessionaire agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we have two events at the Barber Park and Education Event Center, one for fifth of April, two thousand twenty-five, and one for the fifteenth of August. All right, two weddings. Any questions? I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the eleven agreements and, sorry, I move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now we have some new agreements. Some of these are actually concessionaire agreements. Fair. Any question or issues with any of these agreements?
One of them, I'd like to point out, Coroner's not here, but we are trying to sign an agreement with the TIP program, which is Trauma Intervention Program, to have a small office space at the new Coroner's facility, and that program came to my attention a couple of years ago when we heard them talk at one of our JPS meetings, but I guess essentially what they do is when there's been a traumatic situation, a crime or auto accident or something traumatic, those people are called in by the police to sort of assist the victims. They have like a therapy dog and, you know, obviously, you know, the police are dealing with the law enforcement situation, and a lot of times the victims are just kind of left on their own, so we kind of thought that this program might be a good fit to, to have some space at the Coroner's Office, because we do have a lot of, a lot of space at the Coroner's Office. So I'm, I'm happy for this partnership between TIP and Ada County.
Well, and as you pointed out, that, that it's mainly an all-volunteer program. They have a little bit of a staff that is paid, but the, but most of their people who help out with the trauma in, individuals is, they're volunteers. So thank you for that. Is there any other questions or issues with any of the agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the eleven new agreements and approve and ratify agreement numbers three zero zero six three, three zero zero six four, and three zero zero six four dash one dash twenty-four, signed on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on the, appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. So we, we have the agreements, we have indigent services. I'll accept the motion on the indigent services.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and authorize to the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Is there any other business needs to be brought before the Board?
Maybe just a comment, Mr. Chair, the three ratifications we did relate to the use of the Idaho Center for the funeral of Deputy Tobin Bolter, which is happening today, and of course, it is, the public is invited, that's why it's being held at the Idaho Center, so if people would like to come show support and come together, the public is invited to that event, and there will be a funeral procession as well, which may affect traffic, so I don't know if you had any details on that?
Well, other than it's a private event, the public's not invited to the actual service instead, because it's going to have. Well, other than it's a private event, the public's not invited to the actual services, uh, because it's gonna have law enforcement and electric officials. The public invited to, to participate in the procession.
That's right.
That's, that's.
Correction, yes.
It's coming along, uh, and it will be a long, a lengthy procession that starts at Bowman Funeral Home and out through Starr and then through and, and, and up at the arena. So, yeah, that's what these are. These are, these are three agreements to, we, we, we are renting the facility for the, for the funeral.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, and that's why they were added to the agenda, that's right, uh, uh, within the twenty-four hour period, and that's why we had, had, at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, any other questions or issues before we go? If not, I'll adjourn. Thank you. Thank you. Well, good morning. The Ada County Commission is in session, acting as the board of the Emergency Medical Services District for its weekly Open Business Meeting. The time is nine twenty-eight, and, uh, all three commissioners are present. We also have with us.
Jeremy Shabbat, paramedics.
Jeremy Shabbat, paramedics. Uh, Ashawn's over at the Lighthold Center getting set up. Alright, thank you. Alright, Madam Chair, or, I mean, Clerk, are there any, uh, changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have Claims Journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have Personnel Actions.
I'll move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and let the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we have an EMS update.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Um, so as you mentioned earlier, Chief Rain is, uh, already down at the Idaho Center for Deputy Tobin Bolter's, uh, memorial service. He's gonna be serving in the honor guard for that. Deputy Chief John Blake is doing the medical group, um, for the event to cover that, and then Deputy Chief, uh, Hamlin has been involved with logistics and working side by side with our partner agency at Ada County Sheriff's Office, trying to support them and meeting any needs that we can't help them out. That's been our main focus this week, is supporting our partner agency.
Sure. Sure. Alright, uh, did we identify the, the two past advisors that helped Deputy Bolter?
To my know, not to my knowledge, I'm not certain who those individuals are. I know that the Sheriff's Office was likely looking to identify them.
Yeah, we're all trying to identify the person. We'd like to recognize them as.
Understood.
For their community and heroism. Alright, any other issues to be brought before the board?
Not sure.
Okay, we're in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.